Thank you. Good evening.
If I could have a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Steve Carr vote to accept and approve the agenda for the Board of Education, meeting dated October twenty first, two thousand and twenty four as presented.
Nate here in a second.
I'd like to amend the agenda and add action item. Under our policy committee. For an action item this month, we have a policy forty one seventeen point four on renewals and suspensions. That I would like to go on.
Steve or second.
Hi.
Steve Carr vote to accept and approve the minutes. Thompson Board of Education regular meeting minutes dated September ninth, two thousand and twenty four as presented.
Nate here a second.
Steve Carr vote to accept and approve the Thompson Board of Education special meeting minutes dated September twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty four as presented.
Nate here a second.
Steve Carr vote to accept and approve the Thompson Board of Education special meetings dated October fourth, two thousand and twenty four as presented.
Nate here a second.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am honored to be speaking to you all today. For those of you who don't know, I am Emily Morton and I'm a senior at Thompson High School. I wanted to quickly thank my teachers, administration, and the Rotary Club for allowing me to be here to speak to you today. Without them, I don't know what role I would have in school. Growing up in a small town, I've always tried my best to be involved, whether that was with community service or sports. Since a young age, I've been a crucial part of the Morton's annual fishing derby. The fishing derby was started in nineteen fifty seven. The main purpose of the fishing derby is to give those who have a physical or mental disability an opportunity to come and spend the day at Morton's Pond to fish. These participants come from many group homes in the area and even Thompson Soccer's TOPS program. Volunteers started off as family and friends from the community who would come every other year. But as I've grown up, just like other people in my family, I have brought friends that now come back year after year. As being the next generation who will carry out this derby, it is important to my family and I to keep this tradition alive. Last school year, a new club was created, Unified Buddies. I was one of the first to volunteer my time to work with someone who may not be able to connect to people the way I do. Within Unified Buddies, I was paired with a younger student from Thompson and we participated in group activities and games with other buddies from Terryville High School. As the school went on, Unified Buddies was able to expand from eight people to around twenty five people. Another way I get back to the community is to help within the school. More specifically with mentoring younger students. Last year, I participated in the Thompson Youth Mentor Collaboration at Black Rock. And there, I was paired up with a young girl in second grade. Me and her became really close like best friends, and I was even able to act as a role model and to be able to support her. Together, we played board ga- board games, drew, worked on classwork, and overall had a great time. I plan to continue this mentorship program as the beginning of this fall and winter. Also, over the last two summers, I have spent some of my time volunteering at the summer enrichment program. Here, I was able to act as a tutor and role model to younger students. Together, we worked on problem solving, classwork, games, and a lot of science experiments. Finally, another way I have been involved with my community is through sports. At a young age, I started playing soccer and T-ball. Although my soccer career was cut short, my T-ball career turned into a passion for softball. Besides softball, since the start of middle school, I've had a strong love for field hockey. I always strive to be my best on and off the field, and my leadership skills have even allowed me to be selected as a captain for the twenty twenty four season. In addition to field hockey and softball, I have grown up. I have had a growing passion for dance since the age of three. Within dance, I have found a stable ground and even became a role model to younger dancers at my studio. My involvement in the community has led me to various leadership opportunities. A specific leadership opportunity that I ever see from my community service is my membership in the National Honor Society. In the National Honor Society, I serve as a treasurer. Also, I have been the class of twenty twenty five vice president since the start of my freshman year. Within class council, I've been able to take my voices and peers into considerations when planning fundraisers and field trips. Also, I have been an active member of student councils since my freshman year with many different leadership positions. Most notable being president this year. Furthermore, my involvement in student and class council allowed me to hold a position on the executive board for the Connecticut Associations of Student Councils, or CASP. At CASP, I have been the Western District Coordinator since the end of my freshman year. With this role, I serve as the voice for the Western District Schools in Connecticut. Within CASP, I participate in planning events at the state level. Besides my involvement with the student council, I am an active member of the Science Club. In Science Club, I am the social media chair, meaning I am in charge of creating flyers, making posters, and managing social media. Without being involved in the community, I would not be have been able to be presented with various leadership positions. Since the start of my sophomore year, I have been involved in the Science and Engineering Design Research Cohort. This, within this class, each student must create a research project and produce a research paper. I have spent countless nights reading through articles I did not understand at first. However, as I have gotten older, these articles turned into ideas that I was then able to produce into an experiment. As I found more articles relating to algae extract as a bio-stimulant, meaning a fertilizer for plant growth, I started to research, reach out to authors. One thing I definitely will be able to take away from this cohort is the confidence I have gained when it comes to talking to complete strangers. There were times I just wanted to give up when I wouldn't receive an email back. But it wasn't until partway through my sophomore year, I reached out to Dr. Isabella Mijanlock, a professor at the Uni- at a university in Poland. After reading many articles from Dr. Mijanlock's my junior year, I was finally able to ask her to be my scientific advisor who would guide me through the research project. During the Zoom meeting with Dr. Mijanlock, the moment I asked her to be my scientific advisor, her face lit up with joy. She was ecstatic to be able to work with a high school student who was interested in her field of study. With the Dr. Mijanlock's being overseas, I have had to adapt to time changes and her not being in the classroom physically. Now, I am testing if eucalyptus phleboticosis of brown seaweed is a bio-stimulant otherwise known as a fertilizer for basil plant growth. Without the Science and Engineering Design Cohort, I would not have the love for science I do today. As I start my last year of high school and think about what I want to spend the rest of my life doing, the cohort has allowed me to have a better idea of how I'll spend the rest of my life. Once I graduate, I plan on going to college to be able to pursue a career in medical research to combine the two things I love, helping others in research. In closing, growing up in a small town has given me the opportunity to take my leadership skills and community involvement to a local and state level. These experiences are just the beginning to where I will go, will be going in my next chapter. I wanted to thank everyone one last time for giving me this opportunity to share my story with everyone this afternoon. Without my parents and teachers, I would not be who I am today, and I hope everyone has a great rest of their afternoon.
Everyone, as you may know, my name is Burke Bodwin, and I would like to start by saying thank you to the Rotary Club for picking me for this month's student of the month. I would also like to thank my teachers for believing in me and more importantly, my parents for helping me through all of my overthinking and doubt in my high school career. As everyone here knows, Thompson is a small town, but I believe it has a huge heart. I believe that because it's a small town, it has impacted me so much as a person. My school community is one of the main impacts that I've had from Thompson, whether that be all the way back to Black Rock for now. Starting from the beginning, in Black Rock, the teachers and atmosphere of that elementary school encouraged me as a young student. In Black Rock, I started the basics of becoming a Thompson student, and though I was young at the time, looking back, I'm forever grateful for the teachers and staff that were in the building at the time. Today, I constantly look for volunteer opportunities at the elementary school, such as last year's Junior Achievement Day and this year's After School Playground Club. These volunteer opportunities gave me the chance to go back to the elementary school and gain one-on-one relationships with young kids. From those experiences, I have learned what I would like to do in the future. Since I was young, I wanted to be a teacher and teach young kids, but recently, from those experiences, I got. I got, I was able to narrow my field to a speech therapist or counselor. Black Rock still holds a place in my heart today, and I find myself going back to the school to be a part of the school that means so much to me. The Center School also played a major role in the imprint Thompson has on me. Center School is considered the middle school, as everyone here knows. At that time, I was starting to grow into myself as a person, and the teachers at that school helped encourage me whether I was making mistakes or I was doing well. The experiences and obstacles in the Center School were starting to become more mature compared to the obstacles in Black Rock. Such as someone getting the chance to change the date and you weren't chosen, or more importantly, if you have a best stamp compared to your friends. Someone would describe, some would describe me as an old soul. And the Center School is when I really started to grow into myself. I'm grateful for everything that Center School gave me. Now for the high school, though I still have the rest of the year to finish, I won't forget the school and most importantly, the teachers. In the beginning of the high school, I was having hard time and still am, but the teachers in the building really helped me enjoy coming to school for the most part. The experiences in a high school were even more mature than what I had experienced in the beginning. I constantly, even today, come home to my parents and talk to them in order to understand and learn from the experience in school. I also look to my teachers that I trust and talk to them, trying to understand things that happen as well. I believe everything in life happens for a reason, and I look to my parents and teachers to teach me the life lessons that I'm eager to learn and go to comprehend. Sports also helped me get through some of the hard times that I encountered, especially in high school. I am an active member of the Thompson High School Girls Basketball Team, and I love being a part of the atmosphere. This is when the actual community of Thompson really comes together, and being a part of that is that in the form of the sport I love has always been a dream and a goal I've looked forward to. At a young age, I went to all of the Thompson Girls Basketball Games and really saw the town of Thompson come alive, as well as when I was a trotter before we got halftime for one of the big games. Then my freshman year, when I was able to be on the court, instead of in the stands, my love for the game increased immensely. The town of Thompson guided me to become my best self. Through each school, I was able to grow and learn how to be a Thompson graduate, graduate, and soon I will be walking that stage. I believe my future self will thank Thompson time and time again for allowing me to go through the ups and downs of life with supportive teachers and the support of puberty. Thank you.
And often tells her students stories about young Sarah. She even has her fourth grade portrait hanging proudly in her classroom. When classroom challenges arise, Ms. Ryan handles them with professionalism and aplomb as she works with students to be their best selves. Ms. Ryan also appreciates the importance of nurturing the whole child and providing enrichment opportunities. Since its inception at Thompson Center School, Ms. Ryan facilitates the after-school enrichment outdoor learning adventure, a multi-district program through Ed Advance. Over the course of several years, Sarah has also served as a teacher for our summer school programs. In addition to her work in fourth grade, Sarah has quickly established herself as an integral member of the Language Arts Team at Center School. In meaning, she is reflective in her practice. This year, as she and her colleagues implement a new science of reading program, Sarah demonstrates a collaborative style to her work. Moreover, she serves as the teacher liaison for the district-wide strategic planning committee and avails herself to multiple leadership opportunities to broaden her professional learning. Sarah is a true role model for continuous lifelong learning. Sarah is a graduate of Central Connecticut State University with a Bachelor's of Science in Elementary Education and a Master's in Education through the University of Bridgeport. In her leisure time, Sarah enjoys photography, crafting, baking, and spending time with her family, including her new puppy, Lettuce. Congratulations. And we thank Ms. Ryan and her family for coming to support her, but understand you have busy schedules, so if you would like to leave, that you are free to do so and enjoy the rest of your night. Thank you. We would like to congratulate Jocelyn Tortorichi, one of our second grade students, for her achievements in arts at the Bethlehem and Harrington Fairs. And we would like to offer a big shout out and thanks to Glenn Clark and the staff of the Thompson Public Works Department. As you saw in Mr. Kazlak's report and the pictures associated with this, they did a wonderful job in helping to clean up the area in Black Rock School so that the visibility lines were better. So, thank you very much to them and for Detective Koval for helping facilitate that as well. We have no presentations tonight, so moving right along into our student report.
A science and research workshop which take place, took place Tuesday, September seventeenth was held. This workshop used the duration of classes after the eleven to eleven thirty-five lunch period. STEM A and cohort classes attended. The workshop was used as a way to show underclassmen what a research presentation should look like while giving, while using the upperclassmen as an example, as well as giving upperclassmen some public speaking opportunities. On Wednesday, October ninth, the junior class took the ASVAB Occupation Assessment. As for Thompson Center School, the after-school outdoor learning adventure took place. These events were held on Tuesday, September nineteenth, Thursday, October third, and October third, tenth, and seventeenth.
The high school hat, um, clubs have been meeting during the first month of school, and the student council members have planned the spirit week and the pep rally for after homecoming. Um, the Science Club had a volleyball tournament on September thirteenth, and they are having a Halloween movie night on October twenty, twenty eighth. The Literary Club has a meeting during the A Lunch Wave in the main office conference room on October twenty third, and the clubs are always having meetings to plan certain fun things for students and are always looking for other members to join.
As for athletics, fall sports soon coming to a close with field hockey's last scheduled game being the twenty fifth of October. Girls and boys soccer being the twenty second of October, and cross-country state championship taking their place the thirty first. Girl soccer is first in the Berkshire League and second in the state, standing at nine wins and one tie, which now is not correct. That moment I wrote it, it was. Boys soccer is fourth in the Berkshire League and twenty-third in the state, standing at three wins, six losses, and two ties. The girls soccer team is doing exceptionally well, and many students are excited to see the outcome of the season.
On October first, there was a college fair, which students from ninth to twelfth grade attended. Students were able to ask, to speak to many colleges' representatives and ask many questions that they may have had. Along with colleges, there were also military representatives from both the Air Force and National Guard. On October third, the school had an all-star assembly in which two students from every grade were awarded and celebrated for their excellence in the previous month. The senior class took their superlative pictures for the yearbook on October eighth. And October twenty fourth, there would be a college tour at UConn for students in eleventh and twelfth grade.
Um, we have the progress report on our board goals and the superintendent's goals. Um, we have our ad hoc committee meeting follow-up. Those are both as presented. Um, under the Ed Advance Board of Directors meeting report, I attended this meeting at the, um, new um, educational center for the, um, younger students, where they do the early childhood education and saw the new building that they had purchased, which was really good. Um, but what came out of that, um, meeting was that the, um, Career and Accelerator Program, which we have fourteen students participating in that program, is in danger of, um, not continuing because the funding was cut from the budgetner, budget, governor's budget by nine hundred thousand dollars. So they are looking for a way to continue to fund this. So as you saw, I wrote a letter to Senator Martin and Representative Piscopo to ask them to attend the open house, which the two of them did do. They took the time out of their schedules and were there. They were the only legislators there, and they will continue to fight for the funding to continue this program. Um, they are looking in for grants as well, but, um, we need to, as a board, do all we can to try and see that this funding is maintained, because it really is a good program. I wasn't able to go see the facility, but I understand it is a very good facility, and, uh, I'd hate to see our students lose that opportunity. So I just wanted to give everybody an update on that. Uh, the FOI workshop, um, is happening on October thirtieth. Everybody got the invitation. You're welcome to attend if you would like. I will be attending. And then our Strategic Planning Committee, um, we have been using Nick Caruso from CAE for the first couple of meetings that we had, and, um, he was a little bit out of his depth in what was happening. So after speaking with him, Francine reached out to, um, Jonathan Costa, who is the Executive Director at Ed Advance, and he has agreed to come in and be the new consultant for us to get our strategic plan done. Um, so in speaking to Francine and looking what the committee had done so far, he asked that, um, we add a teacher from each school building to the committee. So as you will see, I'm asking the board to make the motion and vote yes to make the change to add the, um, two teachers from the other buildings so that we have full representation. So I would entertain that motion, please.
Steve Carr vote to increase the number of teacher represent- representatives on the Strategic Planning Committee. One, two, three, specifically to add one teacher representative from Black Rock School and one teacher representative from Thompson High School, as recommended by the Strategic Plan Process Consultant Jonathan Costa at Ed Advance.
Nate here a second.
Are there any questions or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Of course. Epstein. Thank you. Um, I will ask Tanya as the committee chairperson of the hundred and fiftieth anniversary committee, a little say on what we can do as a school district to support the hundred and fiftieth committee. Please, and thank you.
So Thompson one hundred and fiftieth anniversary committee meets monthly, um. Yeah. Uh, we're in the process now where we're putting all our stuff, our great ideas together. Um, I gave a list of the rundown of all our events for you to hear. November, we're gonna, is our kickoff, and we're putting a float into the parade, um, at Light Up the Town. February, we're having a bingo night. In March, there's a pub crawl. Um, May, we're having Battle of the Bands, so if any of the high school students have bands, they can reach out to me and we could facilitate you being part of Battle of the Bands. Um, June, there, there'll be a food festival. Um, at following our one hundred and fiftieth anniversary parade, which will occur on June twenty eighth of two thousand and twenty four. Um, it'll run doll downtown, and the food festival will, will happen at Sanford Field. Um, October, we'll have ghost tours in two thousand and twenty four, and then November eighth, tickets will be going on sale soon. At the Grand Oak Villa, we will have the one hundred and fiftieth gala. Um, we are having a book constructed of the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary. Um, each stakeholder in town has been asked to put something together over the last fifty years or so because because the last book that was made was 50 years ago. And so we want to do from that 100, from 1975 to 2025 right now. And so we want to add to the book. And so we're asking anyone in town, each department, fire department, schools, EMS, to put together some kind of history for the last 50 years on buildings, staff, sports, athletics, whatever you want to put in it that you want the school to be remembered by in the book. And then if anybody would like to help or have any ideas with any of the events, they can come to any of our meetings, which is the second Tuesday of every month in the Lena Morton Gallery at 7:00 PM, or reach out to me, and I can get you in touch with any of the chairs to any of those events. That's fine. But if the school would like to put something together for 50 years, I don't know if someone wants to do a... What do we, the seniors, their capstone maybe, or something like that? That would be a great project. We're looking the book to be put out after our last event, so I think they're looking till June for that stuff, so you're quite a bit.
Thank you for that update, Tanya. And then the last item on my report, we have a reappointment of Michael Hitchcock to the Womago at Lakeview Agricultural Education Advisory Committee.
Womago at Lakeview School Agricultural Education Advisory Committee.
Thank you. My first item on my report under correspondence is a thank you that we received from Mr. Banshee, Marilyn Banshee's husband. I want to take a moment to honor her in this meeting. She dedicated decades of her life to our students, and I'm confident that any student who's ever known her would say that she brought value to what she did. She worked in our cafeteria. She was head of our cafeteria when I arrived here at Center School, and she and her right-hand man, Pam, did everything by themselves in the world's tiniest cafeteria, making sure that every child ate well and ate happily. So I want to take a moment now just to thank Marilyn, as I did when she retired, but just to make it public so that everyone knows that we've missed her since the day she retired, and we will continue to miss her now, most especially that she has passed. Thank you for allowing me to say that. The rest of my correspondence are mostly thank-yous for various and sundry reasons. Then there is a list of my Parents Square messages that went out. And as I mentioned last month, the reason behind asking the board to acknowledge correspondence is because of the feedback that I received regarding communication. So I asked the board tonight to vote to acknowledge my correspondence per Policy 2131 as presented.
Our vote to acknowledge the superintendent's correspondence per Policy 2131 Administration Superintendent of Schools as presented.
Nate Beer, a second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you.
The next part of my report includes correspondence that I've received from outside agencies, and they're self-explanatory. Then we go into reports. Our October administrative reports are there. We have three student discipline reports, and we have our report for October. Then we go into personnel. We have three new hires, no reassignments, no transfers or new assignments. We have three resignations, no retirements, no terminations, no non-renewals. And we have four stipend positions and two coaching positions. Before I ask the board to acknowledge my personnel report, I would like to take a moment to thank Mr. Scanziano for his years of service here in Thomaston. He's leaving us to be a permanent, full-time athletic director, a position that we don't have here in Thomaston, and he'll be in his hometown. He's very happy to be in this position that he's taking, but he is also feeling melancholy about leaving us. So please, please, when you see him before his time here ends, give him a good hearty handshake and say thank you for all the work that he's done, 27 years in this district. And he's got a lot to show for what he's done here. Thank you for allowing me to say that before I ask you to acknowledge my notification of personnel specifically as presented.
Steve Carr, vote to acknowledge the superintendent's notification of personnel, specifically new hires, transfers, retirements, resignations, renewals, stipend per Policy 4112, 4212, Personnel Certified, Non-Certified Appointment, and Conditions of Employment as Presented.
Nate Beer, a second.
Questions or concerns?
I'd just like to raise a question regarding one of the positions where we have a resignation. I did see that we had an email talk about a posting for the... About, or not seeing a posting about the bar seat. Any update? That the boys should have some sort of idea because the season's coming up and all that.
Yes, the most recent email that came to me, I responded to today, it came earlier today or late last night. The position was approved today, and it should be going out for posting internally and externally simultaneously tomorrow. There are some people that have expressed an interest, but until we see their application, you know, we can't take them on their word for interest. So we're looking forward to seeing a number of applicants for the position. Thank you for asking, Nate.
And just to make this clear, if everybody knows, but it goes to the teachers first, correct?
We're doing it simultaneously tomorrow, so everyone will get it at the same time. But if someone from the outside, if someone from inside of the teachers' union wants to be a coach, they get priority because that's what I think Sarah is meaning. It's a position that's in their contract. So if someone who's not a teacher wants the position, and someone who is a teacher wants the position, and they're both qualified, the teacher is going to get the position. But if there's no one who's a teacher, then it would be open to anyone. Yes, thank you for reminding me to say that. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
So for coaches, it's done through the athletic department in the high schools. So it would be whoever is selected by either the principal or the A.D. Typically, it's a committee of two. It's not a large committee. So the most you would have would be an administrator from the building and one of your A.D.s that would interview the candidate. And then the candidate is not interviewed at my level because typically there isn't time with the way coaching works. So we hire them, but they're generally a known entity. If there's someone from the outside that we've never heard of before, then they come to me, and I get to meet with them to find out who they are and what they're all about. But generally speaking, it's a parent that we know or someone that's been an assistant coach in the past. I didn't check that, but I can tell you by email, if that's okay, I can let you know. Yep, I haven't checked that one. That should be the only one. We only have one in your building as a building sub. Because the intern codes. University of Bridgeport gives us interns that start halfway through last year and leave halfway through this year. That's just, they do December to December. So if we don't have another intern coming in, then that money is used for a sub. Thank you, Krista.
Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
All right, finishing up my report. We have two requests for family medical leave. We have three new interns or student teachers. They're actually all interns from Central, and they will all be at Black Rock School. And we have an exciting field trip that requires the board's attention this evening. It is the New York City Broadway musical Outsiders the Musical that the Drama Club would like to go to in May of 2025. So I ask that the board vote to accept and approve this request for a field trip as presented.
Nate Beer, a vote to accept slash approve the New York City Broadway musical Outsiders the Musical Field Trip as presented. Or second.
Any questions or concerns?
I did it once, I'll do it again.
Yes, no, from our student representatives? Yes.
Okay.
They approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you.
So I will send out to the board tomorrow the head count of how many applicants we have for the other coaching position for tonight's request.
Thank you.
Budget Audit Committee met October 16th. Business Manager's Report was sent out to all members. The expenditures for the month were $2,145,966.80. At this time, I'd like to vote and accept the business and financial report and expenditures for Policy 3432, 3433, Business Non-structural Operations Budget and Expense Report Annual Financial Statement as presented September 2021.
Nate Beer, a second.
Hi, no?
Steve Carr, vote to adjourn.
We met at the Policy Committee right before this meeting tonight. We were presented adjustments to a current policy that we have to just adjust some holes and change a lot of the language to be much firmer and supportive of our teachers and other people in the school community about what happens if there is an altercation with a parent or even anyone else outside of the school. And reflecting on that, we want to then revisit some of our other policies with inner-school work, with teacher contracts and everything else to... Me or almost that same language to where our policy is very firm about, these are the steps that will be taken if misbehavior happens or confrontation happens. We're moving the Boag Science High School opportunities to first read the evaluation process. So Roxy presented the new valuation rubric. We're hoping to fast-track it next month. So what we need everybody to do is look over it over the next two weeks and send Roxy any minor corrections or critiques you'd like to make to it. If not, then she will iron out the finer details and present it to us at next month's Policy Committee meeting so then we can get it and put it into place, so then we can schedule another meeting so then we can go through it all with Francine and readapt our review process. So you got 14-ish days if you have any comments, concerns, or alterations you'd like to make to it. Email them to Roxy. And... They want it finalized by the 8th, so if you give it to her in two weeks, it gives her a couple extra days to make the final critiques.
Because of the wedding, so the sooner the better you can get them, isn't it?
She will not be working on it on the 8th. She will be dancing, and we're paying somebody to take video. It's not the board of it. The booster club's covered. And, um, perfect. We're an action item. I'd like to...
Fostered.
Close it now.
You got them all fostered.
I'd like to make a motion to vote and approve policy, the changes to policy 4117.4, non-renewals slash suspensions as presented.
Nate Beer, a second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you very much.
Steve Carr, vote to adjourn.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.